Okay, so it's six o'clock. I'd like to open the meeting. And are there any adjustments at all to the agenda? Anybody have anything?
Nope.
Can't do anything, no.
Any public comment? Okay. So I would make a motion that we approve the bills to the town.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bills approved. And then I would make a motion that we approve the minutes to the May 13th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here they are to be signed. This is Diana. Actually, I do have an adjustment to the agenda. Looks like Skip made us up a contract for the mowing. And has his, we need to sign it. It's been signed by the person that's doing the mowing, Derek Richardson, I think his name is. How do we deal with that right now, what we're talking about? So here's the contract. We'll look at it. I looked at it earlier today and have signed it. Bring this into Diana. I assume Skip put together the contract for the
He did, yes.
Yeah, I think we were lucky to land that person to do this. Looks like all the cemeteries were mowed by this past weekend.
That's good.
No complaints. That's good.
As the sun comes out, you can hear the grass grow.
Yeah, with all this moisture. And, you know, I don't know, I don't really know what happened with the cemetery commission, but we should probably try to figure that one out going forward. Contacted Patty Garbeck a little bit about it, and I thought they were gonna meet. I don't know if they have or not, but I guess it's kind of a moot point at this point, but try to avoid this next year.
Is it sort of their job to get these bids and stuff together?
Well, I mean, we, the town office has been helping them.
Okay.
And, you know, since we did the purchasing policy, the select board has kind of overseen it, but more to get the RFP out.
Right, you'd run it down.
It was more guidelines to my audit, getting penalties, not having the liability coverage.
Yeah.
That it then became kind of in our hands as far as putting out what our standards had to be. So we did the kind of behind the scenes.
And then what they've done in the past is get together to make a decision on the bids that come in. Of course, there weren't any bids this time, so
It was last minute, before Memorial Weekend, so
But then it sort of became the town office's role to try to solve the problem, and it really should have been. You know, that's kind of in their board.
That's what I was kind of gathering, okay. I'm trying to figure out.
So hopefully next year. And I think, you know, we kind of shot ourselves in the foot by doing a three-year contract, I think.
No, 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 it's not. It's not.
No, we tried to get a three-year contract.
Right, this is it, yeah. We won't do that in the future.
Even with this one, I said no. I said, this is your new.
Yeah.
We'll do a one-year, not knowing, you know, you may say it's
Too much or too low.
Yeah, so I think that was part of the problem this year. Anyway, we're ready for the town treasurer report.
So everybody has their financial statements. I also printed out our Swenson deposits. So this report will go into the town report for next year.
So this is all four quarters that have been paid?
Those are all three, so far.
Oh, the three, yeah. So we're still waiting for four.
So we're waiting on four. Yep. And that one usually will come in in mid-July. And then I'll have it completed to go in the town report, which it's never been in there. I pay bills. I didn't need to transfer money because the whole errors on the state of education kicked us back for an overpayment. So we received a check, two checks, from one from Hazen and Woodbury School District, totaling $26,149.85. The total installments they had given me, we only get one payment to the schools 20 days after our tax due date. And that was exactly what they instructed me to pay. But there was adjustments that failed to be paid on their part, so it's been bouncing back in emails, and that's what we got back.
Nice chunk of money.
Yes. Other items, prepaid taxes, vault fees in the past two weeks, vital records, remount passports, library donation. So what I did, it ends up being a lot of paperwork I end up having to do, and I still do it. But as far as the library, the other funds, so I incorporated it with it. I end up having to make three copies of just the library orders to go into, one for the library, one for my records, and then one for the select board. So I didn't want to pull it out and start making copies until after.
Yeah, I don't think we
This is the signed, the signed library sheet. I have that, and I should have stuck it in with the bills if I didn't.
But the bill, library bills were in with the bills that we reviewed.
Correct. Yep, payroll.
And I don't think we thanked you last time for figuring out a way to total up all those different invoices. Was greatly appreciated last time, and this time too.
I don't know what I did. I don't know what you're talking about.
Whatever you did, it was great. Well, you had a pile of invoices, you did have all server, then a final
And then a final tally for what they all added up to that matched the check. For a while, that wasn't happening, and it was really hard to kind of figure out.
Oh, you mean if I did different subtitles per fund? I didn't do that this time. It was all
Like she said, yeah.
Whatever you did this time, it was like you go right down the list and match it right up.
Exactly, yeah.
I attended the VLCT government accounting today. My brain's just
Where was that, in the prayer?
It was at Fairleigh.
At Maureen?
Like Maureen.
Did you get a chance to check in with Bill Paul and all about?
Yep, he was one of the speakers.
Yeah.
So yeah, key points that he had discussed with us also came up. But it was a big, and he counteracted, we were discussing the Beamer's liability. And for people who are on, on a crude basis, have to show the later liabilities, where when cash, we don't, it's what they instruct us knowing that we don't have to deal with that aspect on the balance sheet. But there was a lot of, a lot of other things that came up. So I need to sit down with Tom. Tom always used to, for Marsha, he would come in and do the 941s. He would do state tax, Beamer's, because it was a second set of eyes, double checking. Because I do payroll. I do the AP, but it's double checking that, and that's what those monthly payments are. And right now, he is at half of, because he does the bank recs from home now, he's only used half of what we have budgeted. But again, it always comes up about, about the security and always having two people with their hands in it. And if I do, if anything does happen to me, I'd like him working with Nimrek. If I go on leave with the kidney donation, that he's gonna have to come back more. So yeah, it's, it's simple, and I know how to do it, so if it came down to it, me doing it, but I'd like him to start taking over that. That way, he's double checking the payroll and the second set and controls. And with Susan there, the auditing, that's one of the controls that should be in place.
So if you're out, he will come in here, or he'll still work from home?
Oh, no, 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 no. He would have to come in here.
He'd have to come in here.
For payroll, for AP.
Yep. So he'd be back for a while while you're out.
Right. But I'd still like him to, because even for bank recs now, he does it from home.
Yeah.
But I'd like him to come in. That way, he's checking the backup, he's checking, he's doing the 941s, he's doing the state tax, the Department of Labor, because all that's doing is, is making sure that there's no errors on my part.
Yep.
Because bank recs, the money is accounted for. It's just, it's another set of eyes. When you have controls in place, there should be always two people doing payroll and AP anyway. So, and then it came up a more of making sure you have an annual audit. In one town, they set $5,000 aside a year until they were able to afford an audit.
Do you know what it costs them?
To do their audit?
Yeah. I'm sure. They're very pricey.
Yeah, they are pricey.
It was, I believe they had Father Siegel. They hadn't had any years, but they were also attending the meeting, somebody from there.
I know Woolcott does it yearly, and I think it costs, I have it in memory, like $13,000 a year.
But that's been, yeah, you have to go, the first, the first year is the chock. They gotta have a starting balance and an ending, and then they go from there. So it'd have to be kind of like, they do it next year, and then they can go forward doing that. They can't go backwards.
You gotta have a starting, you gotta have an offset, you work from there.
Far back, do you think that they would go to start?
I don't think they'd go back.
They would just start today, from now on forward, yeah. Makes sense, because
So if it's, in the way it seems, it's a big chunk for the town to swallow. So if it is leading up to it, maybe one of our options would be doing, setting aside a little each year until we're able to.
When was the last full audit?
92 or 94. It's in the
That's a long time.
That seems probably better planned for that.
That wasn't
That wasn't a full, we don't, I don't know how
That wasn't a higher down audit. It wasn't a full audit.
Yeah.
It seems to me to be proven better, planning for that.
Yeah. We had it on the fiscal year '20 budget, but then we we dropped it because we were freaking out about how much money we were spending.
But they did, the discussion today was
We can't do that again.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do it, yeah.
Was road crews wanting their extra money back that they didn't spend. And that's a big no-no.
Which one are we talking about?
At the end of the fiscal year, if the highway has any money left, it goes toward next year's.
So it carries forward.
It carries forward, but it deducts it off the tax, because you don't
Right, you wouldn't have to raise taxes again, you already did it once.
Yeah.
Or you're gonna spend it for the end of the year.
The road crews wanted that extra cushion.
To leave it in and then retax it, and you can't do that. Nope.
That was another discussion today. That was fun and amusing.
So will we do some kind of assessment of, at the end of the fiscal year, what's coming up, the end of the month?
I know. It's crazy.
Will we do kind of a, just an assessment of what there was for a surplus?
There isn't a wrap-up until usually the very tail end of July, because there's still bills staggering. There's gonna be, Swenson's always, you know, middle for revenue for the last fiscal year. And then at that point, I'll clear up my receivables that were pending and my payables, and I should, yeah, it'll be complete. Yep, of what's, what was left over, and the financial statements showing where we are under and over.
Right.
So, yeah. And then going forward to trying to finishing up with the budget for this fiscal year.
So right now, you figure we're in good shape, we're not over budget?
I've been quite nervous, because if you look at the due-to, due-from, and you see you
It's the very last page.
It's up in your assets. So you have
Oh, just that right here, okay.
Michael was right, because that doesn't explain it. That explains it. But you see this amount here.
Yeah.
So this is amount for the other funds that the town owes. So you subtract the sweep, the IC, the ICS account, sweep account, and you subtract the money market, and we've been kind of stabilized at $50,000 left in the general. And granted, we get incomes in, and we get, you know, delinquent taxes. It's just, that makes me hold my breath a little bit. Knowing, knowing, depending, it's based on how many, how much delinquent taxes we get left coming in for the next fiscal year. And I'm not cutting into their money. I'm not cutting into the other 13 funds' money.
Yeah.
It may look like we have tons of money, but to me, that's not our money. It's, it's the other funds. So if it, if we get it too close, then I will have to go out for it. Because I don't, those are restricted monies.
Right.
So right now, we're looking good. Or okay.
We're still, we're still floating.
We're still floating.
We're still good, and we're fine. It's just I get nervous.
Yeah.
And it doesn't take much for me to get nervous.
This is kind of the low ebb of the year before the new taxes start.
It does, and then, of course, I just received my Mercedes-Benz D71, so that's a huge chunk.
Yeah.
Yeah. That one's right away, so, and then we, we had them hold off until October for a new piece of equipment. Yeah, they, they come in pretty steady.
Yeah.
Right off the bat.
This will be the last.
Right, for one.
For one of them, yeah.
These are town trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So which one's paid off this time?
Oh, don't pick my brain.
Actually, both, both the 10-wheelers will be paid off. I think, according to
They're only a year apart, as I understand.
Well, they're a year apart in a year, but
But they were in the same
They were same cycle.
Purchased in the same fiscal year, so I think this will be the last payment on both of the 10-wheelers.
That's good.
And what is their replacement cycle? Probably time.
And that's, the thing is that we've kind of done it so many times that it's gotten shorter and shorter. We don't expand.
We're hoping to get a couple more years, have to get them separated.
So this one is the 2013 Freightliner that's done as of 7/1.
So you got a payment, and then it's over with.
And we also have the last one on 14, so yeah, that one's on the, on 7/14, the other one's on 7/1. So yeah, those two will be gone. So here we go onto, and that's just it. Okay, here we go. So replacements for those guys. We've got not until 2022, in those estimates. So yeah, within
We should be able to, at least a couple more years.
I would think we'd want to separate these a little bit.
Yeah, well, that's
That's why I would be nice if it's a seven or eight year. They should be at least that far apart, so
Yeah. Yeah, because you're looking at at least $100,000, the two new ones of those.
Those are expensive ones. You want to get them opposite ends in there, because you're only doing one at a time.
So we should be able to put, tuck a little bit of money away into the HERF fund.
Yeah, my idea would be keep those payments just rolling back into the HERF.
Payments don't come out of that anymore. They go into the equipment, but
We could put the payments in the HERF, in the future.
No, it's part of equipment. It has to be in the highway.
But we could use money from the HERF fund to
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, to build that fund up.
Because that $14,000 was for, this was for this fiscal year's.
Because this is the number
That $14,000 that was left in
From Swenson, you mean, or that was left over in the HERF fund?
Left over in the HERF fund. That was budgeted last fiscal year to help cover this fiscal year's. So there is the $14,000 that should reimburse the higher, but then it'll bring it to at least
We can cover that. We do. But you can help me understand, because my thought process would be that if you have a payment, you figure out how to keep that money to some place that'll pay for the next
There is the schedule that Brandy was looking at. Should get you a copy of that.
Yeah, we can get there.
But they're each itemized in the highway budget, each vehicle. So we budget, but it's, it's within the highway. There is no, there is no cushion for the HERF in the long, because you're, I was looking for something, oh, the due-tos.
Right now, the HERF fund is about $20,000, well, $19,500 is what we have left at the moment.
And of course, we've been kicking, right, so if I removed everything that was, when we went into it, I believe it was like $14,000 something that was supposed to go for this year's. But I'd have to get, I'd have to go back into that to
They would go into, into the HERF fund, or they would come out of it?
It was designated for highway equipment.
Okay.
And I stuck the trucks in the highway fund, and we left the 14 in the HERF. And so the highway took the kicker for the 14 as of right now.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it's looking good. Good job. Get a give-and-ado girl for that.
No stress.
Harry.
Thank you.
So if you want any copies of any of the equipment?
Yeah, I'm good, yeah. But I just was thinking, this is not a conference yet today.
We didn't stick that in the town report this year, did we? I'm not sure.
The HERF? No, we didn't. It wasn't in the town report. I don't think it was here.
That's another one that should be still, just as far as how we're going go forward the future of the equipment.
Right.
All right, thank you.
And the minder cross, we're looking all of them. And when anyone else's eyes cross, would you stare at all this?
It was nice, and I came down earlier today, because the bills were already, so I actually had a little bit of time to
To go through it line by line, yeah.
Yeah. First time I've really done that. I always get curious, towards the end of the year.
Right, let's go ahead, let's go ahead with it, start going.
Well, the only news I have of much importance is that the $7 million school budget passed yesterday with, including 44 voters from Woodbury, a total of 134, no, 174 voters from the four towns. Pretty pedantic.
That's pedantic. .003% of people voted.
Just about, yeah. Okay. Yeah, well, our turnout was actually more than I expected, so
Yeah, the one with very many, when I went over at lunchtime, I think she said
It's probably because of all things. They never say anything else to give you a reference.
I know.
We have no references compared to what we spent last time to this time.
Or even the budget itself.
What does this mean at all? So there's really no reference for me.
Yeah, and I, you know, so I asked that at that meeting, that informational meeting that we went to, and didn't get much of an answer. And then I called the Secretary of State's office, and I said, can, they didn't send out anything for voters to act on, but yet we're having this vote, and he said, well, you can't have anything in the polling place, but you can have something outside. So I put a box of them out on the stairs, but then it rained, so I had to take them. Nobody really, I mean, you can't pick up something like that and make sense of it while you're waiting for your voting booth.
Which you had no lines, no waiting lines.
Right, yeah, we didn't put up a voting booth. So the next election, we're gonna do this all again on June 25th. That's gonna be really crazy, because that's, all these articles have to be voted on, and each one, from what I've seen, from what was submitted before it was canceled, each article has its own like 11-by-17 ballot. So it's really big printing, so people can read it, but it's like so complicated.
So it's another Australian ballot thing.
Yes, it is.
Individual town, same as this last one, or is it all in one place?
The voting's gonna be in each town, but some of the votes get commingled for some articles, and some of them don't. So we're gonna have to have like, I don't know if we have enough ballot boxes.
Who's a part of that building?
Doug tightly built the ones we have now. I think we got three. We could probably make something out of cardboard. So that'll be next month. Another one?
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see how people even know how to vote on those things.
I know. You know, a few of us have been following it.
Yeah, there's no reference again to what it means.
And they probably won't mail out anything, so there'll be some, you know, this, something like, where's that one? I just had it. I don't know. It'll prob, it's, she puts this whole thing in the newspaper, which I think maybe it was in there last week. It's gonna be like this big.
In the Gazette?
Yeah. I don't know if people are gonna really read that either. And then they come in, and of course, we can't tell them anything, even if we understood it already, again. Ballot first, keys in the
So it means it's not just me, so
Okay. This man, look, you got my complaint, that's my email, another email from Kirkland about the gravel going on to his yard. Is that actually true? I haven't been down that much.
Yeah, there is a complaint. When the first big rain that we had on April 20th, when there was still snow on the ground, the ditch down Valley Lake Road, the hill going down to his place, it was full of ice and snow. So the water ran down the road and gullied out the road, and then, of course, the bend in the, you know, the bend at the bottom of the hill.
Shot on his lawn.
The water went straight, and so there's a lot of gravel on his lawn that, you know, he wants us to remove. And the road crew was willing to do it, but it's not really at the top of the list, and Kirk is worried about his grass that isn't able to grow up.
Yeah, but on the other hand, it's still wet. It's still wet to do it.
Yeah, it's very soft, so we would have to get on it with, it's, it's pretty close to the road, so the heavy equipment wouldn't have to dry over a bunch of his lawn, but kind of waiting for things to dry up a little bit. And, but he wants it done, you know, as soon as possible, yeah. But I'll, I have sent him a couple emails, but I'll send, I'll respond to that.
There's a couple of holes. Did you think about whether the town could fill those holes?
Well, I mean, you said, try not to use expensive stone, but
Yeah, but not, yeah, but not silt either, just some regular gravel.
There again.
The only thing that sounds like it would fit to bill is the stone that was there to begin with.
This is on his hill again?
This is by the old store, with the flooding that we had in the village.
Yeah, right, it washed through, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's really nice, like one-inch stone that the A&amp;R paid for.
It washed underneath.
A lot of that disappeared, but I asked our engineer what would be the best way to fill that, and he said not to, don't use like ditching, you know, and silty dirt, but, you know, you'd need to spend that kind of money ditching, you know, and silty dirt, but, you know, you'd need to spend that kind of money for that expensive stone, because hopefully soon it'll be going again. So I'm thinking of just gra-, just grain, you know, gravel.
Well, why do you even fill it?
Well, that's my thinking too.
It's pretty dangerous.
Because that's the state of Vermont's culvert.
Well.
Well, but it is, it is.
I think it's in our space.
It's still rare, but, yeah. I wonder if we could just tape around it?
Well, that would be an alternative, yeah.
Because it doesn't, you know, I mean, it doesn't make sense to.
Waste more dirt in there and then dig it out and get rid of it.
Right.
Yeah, we used to, well, yeah. The state did give us some barrels at one time, but those have disappeared over the years. We could put some cones there and some.
Yeah, we could put some cones.
They're not gonna keep any, I mean, nobody's gonna get killed if they drive in there, I guess, but.
I saw it, you guys were flooding, watching it run down here through that hole.
Yeah, yeah.
And who knows?
So that would be.
Could be another heavy rain and.
And then, um, yesterday at the voting, Amanda Gravel lives right next door, so there's a pretty good washout hole on, you know, there's the stone wall.
Yeah, the cones at the edge of their driveway.
Right, yeah.
Uh-huh.
That's in their driveway, though.
But it, I can't tell if it's in the state right of way.
See, they're in their driveway, the state's right of way, I believe.
Yeah, I think it might be in the right of way, because it's right on the edge of it.
It probably is.
Where the culvert comes out.
Their house is almost the front of the house.
So the state must have looked at that when they were up here checking stuff out, or?
She said that they did. She said that somebody walked over, because the day after the flood, when I was down there, a couple of guys were down there walking around too. Sean Meansworth. He Meansworth. Anyways.
So are they, is it a, is it a, kind of a safety issue for them? I mean, obviously, they drive their cars there to park. Are they worried about that?
Oh, um, she said they don't, it's, she doesn't think it's really part of their yard, but I just noticed on the way down tonight that there was a car parked fairly close to that point. She just asked whether it was something that the town could help with, or.
Well, I.
Anyways, just, well, you happen to go by, take a look, and see whether it's right of way or not.
We could contact our V Trans. V Trans, and just mention that there's someone who's worried about it.
Would that be Sean, or would that be down here?
Well, that's the person I would know and contact, and then.
There's stuff on the other side, I'm pretty sure, is not in the right of way.
No, I'm pretty sure it is, it's either, yeah, that hole.
Hey.
So shall we move on to the store?
Sure.
And I know Mike has some concerns, and that's why he's here, so.
Do you have a?
Will, I don't know if Diana has any news to.
I do.
Oh, good.
Put up some. I, uh, after the flooding, the recent flooding, I did send some pictures over to Lauren Oates, and her response was, well, I hope the people in the yellow house are okay. And, and she said, she hopes she'll get an answer for us in a few weeks. She's a girl.
Well, I've retired from Florida, by the way.
So anyways, the survey has been completed as much as she can. This survey was paid for under the umbrella program that we signed up for. So A and R has paid for the whole thing, and it's taken a long time. I mean, I kind of knew it would. And I told the fire department, if they have to have a survey on their property, they.
Why don't you hire them?
They should probably hire them.
Now, I noticed they haven't driven any pins yet. Are they going to do that?
You know, I thought she had done that, but, um.
I didn't see them, because I wanted to see where they were, and I couldn't find them, other than some temporary pins. I hope they're temporary, they're gonna look at.
Yeah, Chris was saying the same thing, and he was kind of surprised that they put some markers out there, and didn't, haven't talked to him at all yet about what might be.
There's markers across our lot, and then there's markers across at the town hall, there's these little nails, but there's no. Like, if you walk the other property line on the south side of our property, there's actual pins with the little pin markers on them.
Those are like the big spikes they.
They use a big piece of rebar and then put a cap that's stamped with the town number.
Some of the stuff behind his house are maybe wooden stakes with ribbon.
So I was hoping they were gonna go back and actually put some.
Right.
So if that's a survey, I'd like to give him a copy of it, so he could at least see.
Even see what it looks like.
So anyways, the issue here is that she, she wants the town to talk with the fire department about the location of, of this line. It looks to her like, your line is like about twelve feet north of.
So this solved one of my problems, because our lot line shows this line going this way, and I thought it was straight, it is straight, so we have a lot more property there for us, and. Yeah, because the pole's right here.
Yeah.
I tend to agree with that, it's about where the line is, because the landmarkers show that, the big trees show that, the stone wall, it all makes perfect sense where she found. I wouldn't mind getting.
You might as well have that, yeah, you might as well have.
Because the, because the tax map showed the property going right here, and it actually is straight. That's what I thought, so she verified what I thought. And, and this is probably right, because that pole is what we were kind of thinking was the line, but if it's a few feet to one side or the other, I wouldn't believe that, too.
When they put the pole there, I'm sure they didn't care where the property line was, so we just assumed.
But I don't know if we could push, have them set pins.
I think, I'm pretty sure that's part of it, and I'm not sure.
Because that would settle it.
Actually done that, no, I think she said something or whatever in here.
So I can keep this, okay?
Yeah. This is actually, this letter refers to the third progress print, which was about a week ago, and, but this is actually the completed copy. And she mentioned that there maybe should be some kind of a quick claim deed to confirm where that line is.
Yeah, we're game for whatever, so.
You might as well have that land, because we're not gonna be able to do anything on this side, so.
Right, because that'll just be green space eventually, and it'll have to mow it. We'll put it on ours and mow it, keep it looking nice.
Okay. So.
And if they have any questions, the interesting thing that he has to do is have her get in touch with me, and I'll tell them about it.
Well, oh, and John McCullough came in today. And he's, I guess, part of your group representing Callis.
Was it, uh, could be, okay, yeah. I mean, so many meetings, I'm not sure, yeah.
So anyways, I gave him a copy of this.
Perfect, okay. Oh, yes, John, yeah, the other, he's working with the architect, yeah.
He came in looking for.
Correct, he'll be happy to see that.
A deed description.
Well, one of the questions was where that lot line is, and that's what we were kind of waiting.
And there's lots of good information here, going back to your deeds from eighteen fifty-seven, eighteen seventy-five.
There's an old barber shop. Does anyone remember the barber shop sitting in there somewhere? There's a, there's a passage for the barber shop, right, in the deed. I don't even know where the barber shop was.
Well, they used to be it.
It was somewhere, it's somewhere in here.
There was a, one of that little building down before you get to Healan Blake's driveway, there was a little building there.
So it's funny, because the tax map shows that being like that, so it's not like that. And this, when you walk these walls, the real, this, this looks right. Just from what the land looks like. You always see the big stately trees and the stone walls, I said, that's usually the real line. Okay. Thank you.
Hey. So.
I got my copy.
Here's a copy for first. We'll, I mean, I'm sure the Mylar will be filed eventually.
Unless I have one question, I'm about driving the pins, it'd be nice to set the markers.
She said here, I would also point out that the west end of this line would fall approximately twelve point, twelve point eight feet north of the power pole and pole brace near this corner, and thus would fall within the end of the gravel dropped along the dug-up section of the store property.
So it's actually quite a bit more than what's there.
Falls within the area of the former gas tanks, but, oh, well, I guess it sort of does. The fire department may want to have that end of the proposed line moved to the south. I don't, I don't know why, though. Since the, unless you were concerned with any remaining contamination.
Really, I'm more concerned of our lot size, and what we're trying to do, where lot, lot lines are gonna be an issue.
The bigger the better.
Since the line needs to be reestablished by deed, this would be the time to revise it if decide, desired. If you have any questions or comments.
So I could call her directly and ask about that, okay, because I would, if that's ours, I'd just soon have it, but we have to quickly, and then figure out what the implications are.
Yeah, I think she could do that. When you did that, uh, up at, um, by the garage, did the surveyor actually draw up the quick claim deeds, or did you have to have a? They probably just drew up the description, and then you had to have an attorney do the quick claim deed.
I can't remember, I don't, I don't remember a quick claim deed, but.
Or maybe he decided he didn't want to do a quick claim deed.
No, he, it's pretty much just kind of a, um.
Lease, long-term lease or something.
Yeah, it was sort of a trade-off. Yeah.
Okay, so, that's all I've got.
Yeah, so, I know, Mike, you had some concerns, and you might as well, you are a good person to be here, too, with this discussion, so.
Right, well, what I've got, I'll hand out to you, you can take a look at it. Just pass it.
All right.
Do you have one, huh?
Yep.
The same thing you said when I gave you.
No, I did.
Oh, okay, should be an extra one there somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, see, okay, good.
All right.
I want you to take a look at that.
So you told me you never get on your computer.
I didn't, why didn't?
You typed it on a typewriter?
No, huh?
You didn't type write it?
I thought sixty minutes worth, had you gone on to take you through that?
Oh, wow.
Sixty minutes a word. Financial matters. Grant for any anticipated return if money spent or anticipated to be spent, or anticipated to be spent, well, I guess it's a question. This says to Woodbury Town Office, but then it says, I am addressing this request to you.
Right, I've not, you know, I'm not sure who the holder of those records are, so.
Well, Diana pretty much has the records, yeah.
Officially, the town is probably them, but.
Well, that's why you're C C.
The practicality, I'm here.
That's why they get the C C, so they, we can address it, and that's why I'm here, if anybody has any questions.
And that's stuff we should be able to produce, right?
Oh, we've got everything.
Yeah.
I agree to pay a reasonable customer cost. Now, if you need, well.
That's all, that's all by statute.
You'll just have to go through what I have and tell me what you want. Because if you want, um.
I can answer that.
Copies of the studies and all that stuff, I can.
Anything that is, has a financial attachment to it. In other words, anything that the taxpayer.
Somebody spent money.
Anything that the taxpayers of Woodbury, state or law, federal government, all the monies being spent.
Now, can you break it down, like, state grants, town funds, I'm not sure somewhat?
Some of the things, some of the state money that was spent, we don't even know how much it cost, how much they spent. For example, the phase-two environmental assessment that the Regional Planning Commission paid for, we never saw any of that money, it didn't go through here.
So you'd have to just direct him to those guys to get the money.
So there's a state the one that started the process, or is it the town that started the process of purchasing, because that's who I think should be.
The town.
The town, yeah.
But we, but we didn't do, we didn't, yeah, we can, we can tell you all the town money that's been spent.
Right.
State or federal money, we don't.
But, but my argument is that the town is the one, they've got the ball rolling, and it was the one who incurred, caused the people to incur these expenses. That's why I feel they should be able to give us the answers to these numbers.
Yeah, I mean, the Regional Planning Commission, you know, we got, the phase-two study was paid for through a grant, other brown seal program, they have all the records for that. You know, we don't have, we not, probably don't have them, but they do, and you could get them from them, or we could get them for you from them.
Well, what he, what he's asking is you to direct him where to get those, who has.
Well, no, I, what I'm saying is, no, what I'm saying is, the town caused this whole event to transpire. They're the one that got the ball rolling, that started the financial indebtedness to the taxpayer. So that's why I'm directing this to the town clerk, or to the town.
Right.
To give us, the taxpayers, an accounting of what money is spent, just looking for some transparency, there's been little to no transparency up to this point.
Michael, this, this, you come in and say that every time, you know, we have, this is kind of like a, a, a budget or agenda item every month, there are minutes. You know, it's on H C T V, there's been, nothing has been.
But, but I don't see anything, I don't see anything when I go out and I read the minutes. I don't see how much money's been spent, I don't see anything like that. That's what I don't see.
Just the numbers is what you're.
The numbers is what I'm looking for, that's all.
Having dealt with this at the state level quite a bit, we should be able to provide records that we're custodians of, which is what you're asking.
Correct.
And we can direct you to the records of the others are custodians. We can't produce records we don't have.
Right, but in other words, if you've got something where your town pays twenty percent, and the state pays eighty percent, you should be able to give me the eight percent number.
But what it sounds like.
That's pretty simple, I mean, other.
And what I'm saying is, me coming in on the back end, not knowing all the steps that have been on, I would say that you have asked that if there are other records, which you did mention, we don't know it, so then we would have to direct you to where to get those records.
Well, things like, you know, things like property taxes. Now, I know we had a tax abatement hearing for that piece of property, and it was decided they weren't going to abate the taxes. Somewhere along the line, the taxes, my understanding, have been abated.
No.
Or.
In the, uh, purchase and sale agreement, when that was being negotiated between the owners and the town, it was agreed that, uh, the town would pay the outstanding property taxes.
So the property owner hasn't paid taxes for how long?
Hmm, I think it's probably two or three years.
So the town has lost that money, it's incurred that expense, that's the kind of information I'm looking for. Because it's out.
Hasn't happened yet, but.
Well, the taxes are delaying that, correct?
Right.
So, but, that's money still the town hasn't got.
Right, right.
And it's town, it's not only the town, money the town hasn't got, it's gonna be town, money the town is gonna pay. With, you know.
I mean, town pays itself, yeah, somehow, there's gotta be records somehow that it gets paid from some fund or whatever.
But that's an expense to the taxpayer, is what I'm saying. That's the kind of information I'm looking for. That's an added expense to the taxpayer. So that's the kind of information I'm looking for. The state's not gonna have that information, that's a mission that we're gonna have.
So in addition to the Regional Planning Commission paying for the phase-two report, the A and R paid for the removal of the contaminated soil, and I don't know how much, how much that was.
Right, this is, my point again, is we would just direct you to where to get those records.
Does that mean I have to file the same paperwork with them?
Correct. Because we're not the custodian of the records, is what I'm hearing.
Right.
We don't have those records.
You'd have to make that request to the different entities that.
So I guess he would want.
And that's actually what you asked in your letter, too.
So what you, what you should probably provide, Mike, is a list of, you know, the different phase-two Regional Planning Commission, don seals.
Now, about grants that we received, do I have to get that information from the people?
We don't have any grants. Well, the only grant we've received so far is twenty-one hundred dollars from the Woodbury Fund. That's not taxpayer money. We don't have any FEMA commitment yet.
So it sounds like we can produce the, well, the town has spent.
We have the thirty thousand dollars that the town approved two or three years ago, and I have a record of, we have records of all that, how that.
It sounds like.
And all I'm, I'm saying for transparency purposes, it would be nice to know where we are in that thirty thousand dollars.
It sounds like you can produce that.
But.
I'll clean this up, I got a couple.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I guess what I'm saying is, it's not just Mike that needs to know, the townspeople should know where we are on it.
They are welcome to know.
I don't think that's a reasonable question.
No, absolutely not. I agree with you.
We are between Brandy's and my records, we've spent about half of that thirty thousand dollars. And, but, but that's all reimbursable, you know, we get seventy-five percent of that back.
Yeah, right, right, with the, um, the fund, the thirty thousand dollars, there's thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six and forty-three cents.
Okay, and things like, once they make.
And we, we have records of where, you know, that money, money that was spent for that, um, we have records for that, and like Diana said, the money that we've spent so far from that fund is reimbursable through the FEMA grant that we're anxiously waiting for.
So what you're saying, I, I just want to make sure that I'm not spinning my wheels here. So when you say you're gonna be reimbursed by FEMA, this amount, you still want me to go to FEMA to get that information, or is that stuff?
No, no, FEMA won't have that information for you. They haven't, we haven't got the grant from them.
You'll get, what it says, you'll get what we have, it's just things like the tank remediation, right, when they pull the dirty soil. We don't have those records, is my understanding. That was all paid for by the states, you'd have to go to the state to get those records.
But I can tell you where.
Yeah, just, if you give me. Yeah, just, if you give me a.
And that's what your letter says, to show you where to get them.
Yeah, if that's information that you don't have, then just give me the contact person you people have talked with, so I can do the same process with them as well. Now, after the, assuming the acquisition is made, we still don't know when that's going to happen, is that correct?
Well, we're waiting, when the FEMA grant happens, then we start the process of purchasing the property.
And you're going to have to go to the townspeople for a vote for that money?
No, we've already approved it.
It's already been approved.
And how much has that been approved for?
That was part of the, the grant, that was actually the amount that we have to pay for the property was established by FEMA. And it was fifty-five thousand dollars or something like that. Yeah, we had to have an appraisal done, a pre-Irene appraisal, that was done by a professional, and that amount that he came up with is, was put into the FEMA grant, and that was required of us by FEMA.
So the thirty thousand dollars the town has spent, what you're saying is going to cover all the expenses of the town acquiring?
Hey, the people, the voters approved an additional fourteen thousand dollars this year, because, you know, it's been four years and things are getting more expensive.
The, the original thirty thousand dollars was, this is a seventy-five, twenty-five percent.
See, that's the information I'm looking for.
Well, that's, that's been in the minutes.
It sounds like you can produce that, because we're just going around and around, is what I'm saying, it sounds like we can produce what you're looking for, or give you the names of who to contact to get the information you're looking for.
So the original submission for the grant, twenty-five percent of that came to thirty thousand dollars, that's what we voted on at town meeting.
And the actual vote was that the townspeople voted to participate in the program, to apply for FEMA for the money, and at that time, what we estimated was going to include thirty thousand dollars as the twenty-five, twenty or twenty-five, I don't even remember.
Twenty-five percent.
And since then, things have gotten more expensive, so we got another fourteen thousand dollars, but we still don't have a total.
So.
It might be more, it might be less.
What I'm looking for is the total cost to the taxpayers of the state alone, and to town of Woodbury, so far. Yeah, so far.
Not including the federal government?
No, I, well, no, I listed the federal government in there.
Right, and she'll direct you where to go for that.
So I guess what I'm looking for is a, at this point, until you get those figures together, a ballpark figure of how much money is going to be invested in that. That's, to me, it's a simple question, when it's all over and done with, based on your purchase and sale agreement, any remediation that has to be done after building the store down, any and all money associated with that, that's what I'm looking for, is a ballpark figure, which, somebody's got to have an answer to that.
There's been, you know, I mean, between what we, you know, received, you know, the brownfield.
Yeah, we don't, we don't really know, we just have some.
Originally, originally, it was like forty thousand dollars for that Phase Two study, and then there was, the study got compacted a little bit, it wasn't as complicated as they originally thought, so, but we don't really know what the.
Then there was some more money that Regional Planning Commission paid out to have the next phase, after the brownfield study, they had to go back and do.
Do some asbestos treatment.
No, well, that's part of the whole, but they had to do a plan on taking the soil out, that was also paid for by Regional Planning Commission, and then A and R paid for the actual removal. The asbestos removal is part of the demolition project.
So are we looking at fifty thousand, two hundred thousand, you know, half a million, what do we, do we have an anticipated number, a finalization of that project? Somebody must, I mean, we aren't going into something totally blind, I would hope.
No, and, and, you know, a lot of this has been paid for, you know, these different studies, they're paid for, they weren't paid for by the town, but the.
But they're paid for by you and I as taxpayers.
By, by, you know, the federal grants are paid by everybody in the US.
Right, but it's.
We're getting some of it back.
And the state, they're paid by everybody in the state, yeah, and that's, you know, I mean, that's how anything gets done.
Basically, the underground, the underground storage program was, the landowners paid the ten thousand dollars, you know, when they bought the property, to participate in that insurance fund. So that fund is actually, I think, been paid for by, you know, gas station owners and oil dealers, and so, over the last thirty years, when these things have been an issue.
I mean, one thing we've done, Michael, is try to take advantage of different state or federal programs that pay for these things, so that the town itself isn't paying for them. Granted, yes, we're all taxpayers, so technically, you know, we have paid for them in some way, but we've tried to work the system as best we can to keep the actual town costs to a minimum, so. And we've been pretty lucky, I think, we've been pretty lucky.
Now, once it's down, are they going to have to, once you've purchased a property and you go in and remove it, this money's already there for that, that's not going to, or is that additional?
It's probably a part of the grant.
Yeah, when we received the grant.
You said it's part of it, but it's not all of it?
The, well, the grant, the project involves all the studying that's been done so far, buying the property, taking it down, and then re.
Stream rest, any kind of.
Restoring the screen.
Back the way it was.
So any, now, I mean, I'm sure that I'm.
Those are all in the grant application, so that's, all those.
Barriers, so nobody's falling in, the town's not held liable, all that kind of stuff.
Which is going to be an open brook like you have around the village, like we see everywhere, that's my understanding of it is.
Yeah.
It's going to be an open brook like we have right in the bench of the post office.
And we don't have to get an additional study done for any of that stuff?
Well, we do have an engineering.
For the stream restoration, but that's part of, that's part of the grant application, too.
So you have any estimates on what that might cost?
Um, we have definitely an estimate from Don Marsh, yeah.
But we were, we were advised to estimate generously for the FEMA money, because if we don't spend it, that's good, if we don't need it, that's good, but if we need it, then.
So what was that estimate, I guess is the question, what was that estimate?
I don't have.
It was around twenty thousand dollars, I think.
Yeah, I think, and for the actual stream restoration, we had a couple of different estimates.
Yeah.
Anywhere between thirty and fifty, but.
We do have some estimates on those.
Yeah, I mean, we got the estimates to.
They were just really, because you can't see what's under there now, it's difficult to make any kind of an estimate, you know. There's made stream, stream alterations, specialists will have to approve it.
So the estimates, we've gone ahead and got this information you provided?
Yeah, the estimates were needed in order to, to put into the grant, grant application.
So that'll all be inclusive with what I requested?
You can, Diana can give you a copy of the grant application.
Give you the copy of the grant application.
Well, I don't need the copy of that, I just need the mics.
We don't have.
Well, it wouldn't be expended funds, in order to get what you want, you'd have to get the grant application, it sounds like.
Right.
Because the funds haven't been expended.
But it's anticipation, it's anticipated, those funds.
I would suggest getting a copy of the grant application, that would be one.
I mean, that's the whole, that's what this process is, is, you know, you get estimates, you figure out approximately how much this is going to cost, and you put that in the application. You have to, you have to present these figures in order for them to make a decision on it, and then hopefully, you know, the estimates are going to cover the cost.
Would it, do you think it's asking a lot if, once a month, or every, you know, every selectings meeting, if you post or put in your minutes up to that point, once we get these numbers together, what the town's cost has been so far? So that it, just for purpose of transparency?
You know, if we could do that, and, and, you know, if you, if you're going to do the groundwork of finding out how much the brownfields, you know, Phase Two.
I'll, I'll give you the numbers they give me, and I'm just looking at the numbers that.
Yeah, no, it would be good to know.
Yeah.
That you people put your numbers together, and I'll give you the numbers they give me, and then you can, you can post it so the people can see it.
Once we start, once we get the FEMA award letter, I think things will start to happen fairly quickly. So we've got the, the bank is ready to hand us the money, and we've got the contract for the demolition, we've got the purchase and sale agreement, we've got the title search is done, and now the survey is done. So all the, oh, we're just waiting for that one letter, and then we'll start to spend.
And because, you know, it's FEMA, it's a federal grant, they basically aren't going to give us any money until we've spent it.
It's reimbursement.
It's reimbursement, that's, that's the process, so we keep records of what we've spent, submit those records in a report, and then we get the money, so. It's not like they're going to give us a chunk of money, and then we kind of spend it out, we have to spend it first, so the.
It's like every other FEMA grant.
Yeah, it's, it's, so we're going to be basically taking out a loan with the local union bank.
Interest is included in that?
It's, actually, the interest is extremely low, because, let's see how she explained it, it's, they're lending money to a nonprofit, so they don't have to pay tax on the interest that they make from us. So borrowing that money for, you know, nine months or so is, is, yeah, the interest will be included in our total cost. They also said that, you know, if we wanted to start applying for, you know, our seventy-five percent of some of these small amounts we've already spent, we could do that now, but. I don't want to do that until we get the grant award letter.
The other question I have is, once that property is acquired, is it all going to remain in the town, or is it going to, you know, as far?
It's all going to remain in the town.
So nobody, I mean, I'm thinking of the neighbor next door there, Chris.
It's a mitigation, so you're not allowed to ever bill or transfer there.
It has to, it has to be restored to a green field, which means there's no, there can be no building on it.
Right.
It can be grass or.
It could be a little bit of a parking area, as long as the, the parking area, if we couldn't pave it, it has to be, is it impervious, the word, where water can run through? So, and that's part of the FEMA deal, I mean, this grant is not to get rid of the old store, it's to try to.
The hazardous.
The flooding, that, that's the whole, this is part of a kind of post, the money actually coming from this is a federal money for post-Irene work on different, you know, different towns, for the flooding that happened during Irene. With the FEMA, FEMA money that came to the state for that. So the whole, the whole reason for this grant is the flooding issue, not the, the dilapidated, you know, eyesore in the middle of the village. Some people kind of lose sight of that, but that's, that's what this grant is for, is to try to relieve the flooding issue of the village.
Now, I'm just looking at this, Mike, and it shows, that's a store, that's Chris's property, and is it showing that the town's property is right on the edge of his doorstep? And how does that affect him? Are you guys going to build?
That's what it seems to show.
Is it going to be green space right up to his front steps, and he doesn't have a driveway?
Well, probably, you know, I don't think we have to mention that to anyone.
Well, it could very, you know, but, I think it's going to, for adverse possession.
I think as long as his driveway wasn't paved, he's okay.
It is paved.
Is it paved?
But I, but I think that, it's been there fifteen plus years, so I think that's adverse possession.
I don't think it's a huge issue, he's been using it.
I'm sure he's going to be concerned about that, if he wants to sell the place that, that he does have a parking lot.
Well, if he bought it without a, if he bought it without a survey, you know, or without a title search, or, you know, he probably knew there was.
Because all this survey did is establish where those property lines are, he could, all that he can do, if he's not going to just say, I've had it, is you'd have to challenge the survey somehow.
Or, or follow for adverse possession.
Yeah, you're correct, right, because the driveway's been there forever.
Yeah, it's been there since the crisis of corporal, you know, I mean.
Well, the other issue for Chris is the well that's in, in there somewhere.
It's right, I know, it's the driveway somewhere.
And that was shared.
I guess my question is, would this be the time to correct that, for, and I'm, I'm not here advocating for Chris, I'm just thinking, no.
If he wants to hire an attorney and do that, that's, that's up to him. I don't think, we have enough stuff going on here.
Yeah, it's tough with FEMA, because I've dealt with FEMA stuff, they don't like any changes.
Yeah.
I know that when he bought the place, it was assumed that it was halfway to the driveway, now it finds out here for himself. But I'm sure he's going to be worried about, you know, what's the town going to do, I think the town either should have an agreement that, you know, the pavement's going to be the pavement, we're not going to turn that into green space.
That would be my feeling.
Yeah, you got to just up and abate it.
Yeah, because once they, once they tear down the building, and they start abutting up to what they, that, that's the kind of thing that should be settled before any of that transpires, I would hold it.
Well, we said in the contract for the renovation, removal, the demolition, it specifies that there should be no damage to that pavement, and if it is, then the contractor has to complete it. Because we were hoping that they could do the demolition without actually driving on that driveway, but if they have to, then they'll have to repair it, that's in the contract.
In fact, they know there's an easement on our deed for our side to allow the town to have machinery on our.
Regressing regress.
Yeah, there's an easement there, so we can let the machines go on our side of that part of the street.
Plus, we have an old, there's an old agreement that was signed by Earl Cookson, Doug Aronson, and somebody else, maybe Sprague Bailey, allowing the town to go back there.
That's part of that, because it's on our land, too.
To go, go back there.
To give a road. Go to Sprague's old place?
All the way around the backside of the stream.
There's the right to go back there and make repairs to the stream.
To maintain the stream bed, because I didn't understand it, and then when I saw the way you could drive an excavator along our land and run behind the store and out toward where Sprague.
So common sense worked.
Yeah, that's how you did it back then, because I didn't understand what it was, and oh, it's just an easement so they can clean out the brook if they need to, it's okay.
They need to now.
It's a building.
I wonder whether.
And it's full of rocks.
What happened last week, was that the, the water backup where it goes under the store didn't come in, or was there actually another block that's at the culvert?
It was backing up along the stone wall right behind Chris's, that one area was diverting a bunch of water, and the rest was plugging up behind the store.
As it entered this culvert.
Yeah, it just couldn't fill it, it was just redirected around, and went right through the fire station.
And the, there used to be a drop inlet there.
Yeah.
That seems to be gone. Right at the, near the, you know, just north of the power pole there.
I've got a good picture, you can see where the water was just backing up behind the building.
So anybody have any questions on the paperwork that I've submitted?
No, no.
It doesn't give her a timeframe, it's.
Oh, yeah, those three days.
Three days, no, it's three days to.
To determine if you're the record holder.
You're the record holder.
But I think, I think, I read in the secretaries, they give you fifteen days, fifteen working days.
Fifteen office days.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fair, yep.
It's, it's, you've got to.
I just want to make sure she had a reasonable amount of time to do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Deal proves that, and send him where he needs to go and find other records. Fair enough.
Yeah, there's a few things that, I think, some of the original advertising that we did for the.
And a copy of the grant application, which isn't in here, but I think you should have.
Properly, yeah. The advertising in the newspapers that we did for the lead and asbestos, I don't think that's all in here, so I'll dig that out, and after Andy put this in for total.
Well, like I said, if you have any questions, feel free to, if I'm not there, leave a word in my, with my plastic secretary there, the answering machine, and I'll get back to you.
We'll call you on your iPhone. You one of those too?
No, I have the, the phone.
Anybody, like, somewhere between my age and like eighty, the people stop having iPhones, I start.
Yeah.
Having foot phones?
Or no phone.
Or no phones.
You go backwards from me, everybody's got one.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
I'm sort of right on the edge.
You have to have a pager and all that stuff.
I got all that stuff, man, I got pagers, phones, I got two phones, that should be enough for anybody.
So the only other question I got, just looking at your agenda, the memorandum of understanding with the volunteer, what's that involve?
Well, stick around, we're going to get to that.
Alright, I'll stick around, you're done with me, I'm done with you at this point, I guess.
So I saw Chance come in, and we could do that right now.
Let's do chances, nobody's sitting around for dog licenses.
What's the word?
Oh, I don't know, is she coming back?
No.
I didn't want to take her seat.
Well, he's so comfortable, he's probably going to have one in the apple over there, okay.
I have a couple copies of it, if, you probably know.
I know what I said.
I brought another one, if somebody needs to look at it.
You want to look at it, Mike?
Sure. Thank you. So is this something new that's just popped up?
No, we've already, because you weren't here when we signed the last one.
I was going to say, this has been going on for a while, it's actually the same exact thing, but because of the capital replacement plan, we needed to add that in, so if you actually pull up. So if you actually pull up the old one, you'll see that it's identical, other than.
Did Skip design this one for you?
No, we did this one, this is the same as we have, so you were on the board when I did this before, back, I think it was back in twenty twelve, I wanna say, twenty thirteen, when we separated all of the finances. And then I had come in and said, well, it would make sense, since we have the monies approved at town meeting, we should either have a contract with the town or an MOU saying what we're going to perform, whatever, because that's problem one. And problem two is, money's the way we allocate it at town meeting, meaning they're payable thirty days after town meeting. So without that, without this agreement, that does the quarterly payments and when the truck payments do. Like Chance said, it's a, it's a, just, only the change, it, it's an open-ended agreement, we could review it every year, we never have for a few years. And, um, it's basically just adding when you would pay that capital fund that was approved this year. The only change, right?
That's the only change, I changed, I did change the date to today, so.
Right, yeah.
This agreement's been in place for quite a long time.
Quite a while, yeah, I know we reviewed it since I've been on the select board, I remember at least twice, I think, and.
I, I would, I would suggest, you know, the next time we need to change this, we add a provision into it stating, you know, it's only good for three years or whatever, that way, that way it gets reviewed on a regular basis.
It would be good to review it, just bring it up.
Yeah, because all it takes is a change of a couple select board members and all of a sudden.
No, again, nobody knows.
Nobody knows what it is anymore.
So any questions or, or comments?
Nope. Number six, give a quick question, what happens if that should occur?
Which thing is it?
Paragraph six.
Budget failing?
At the very last line, if, if an agreement cannot be reached. What's the protocol at that point?
So this would, so, so say we ask for funds, our budget at the town meeting, and I'll let you enter, it's like, don't let me be improper, so that we see. Well, in the vision of our duties, I don't have a.
That's what I'm referring to, for, for, so everybody knows.
I'll let, I can answer, I can answer, because I know what it's.
I'm just saying.
The intent of it was, what would happen is, uh, if, if no funds were approved at town meeting and we went one or two times, and, uh, we would then say, we, we would either be out of business, you'd have no fire protection, or this says the select board might, um, negotiate with us directly on how we might be paid to provide the service. Or we would go out of service, and then the select board has a problem.
I guess my question is, what happens to all the properties and equipment if you go out of service?
That, that all reverts to the town of Woodbury.
Right, it's, it's always been that way in our, in our, uh, what do you call that, the, uh?
The bylaws.
The stuff that's at the secretary of the state's office.
Articles of incorporation, that's all in there.
And just so, I think this is almost identical to the Calis contract that we saw, and we just called it an MOU instead of a contract here, we can call it a contract. Prior to doing this, we had nothing, so, you know, we wouldn't do it, but you, we could just leave, not do anything, and that's why I kinda said, we got a lot of money coming our direction, I, as fire chief and Steve Morse was present, I mean, really would feel a lot more comfortable if it was in a written agreement about what was to be performed.
The protocol.
Yeah, because with nothing, it just, you know, if you had the wrong people there, they could say, well, we're just not responding to calls anymore, and it happened.
And this is renewed every year?
Well, it's, it's an open-ended right now.
And the reason I said, the reason I ask is, when you have a member changing the select board, it may be a swing of opinions on how it's done, you know what I'm saying? Makes sense?
Yeah, so again, we're, this was just, that was the feeling when this was done, to leave it open-ended, so if people wanted to change it, I suppose we could make it an annual thing, I don't. We're, we're in weird territory, because when you look at the selectman's handbook, the way you fund the fire department, the select board doesn't oversee, so this gives the select board some.
But I don't see anywhere on here which says, the agreement may be canceled by either party upon ninety days, okay, written, no, so there is.
Yeah, there is something there, yeah.
Okay. That was my question.
But what's weird about it is, we'd still have the funds, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
That's what's strange about the country.
Like I said, if we decide to, you know, start doing this every couple of years, I, I personally would suggest that. Every MOU I've written for the state has a three-year window on it, and says we're gonna review it by this date of this year. You know, I would highly suggest that.
Do we wanna add that? Do you need this signed tonight? Could, do you wanna add that to this MOU that we've got in front of us and?
I can go in the other room and add it and print it back out. I mean, that's up to you guys.
I like that, I mean, I, I always wanted this to be either more frequently reviewed, because over time, you know, we're spending more money, we're looking at a building, there may wanna be more oversight by the select board, in my opinion, and that's, so this may wanna change in some future date.
So if we were to review it and, and re-approve it every number of years, would it be?
Three years.
Three years, is that what's?
Well, the question, what's?
Two, two years?
I would say two, because you guys get voted out. One of you is getting voted out every year, so you're going three, and you really could have.
Hold a board in two years.
That has never seen it, so at least that way, even if two of you did get voted off, you'd still have one guy left that had signed the last MOU, so. I would suggest two years.
So do you still leave in the ninety-day part? The question, my, my point being is, yeah, okay.
Yeah, because that's, that's, that's a, this is a memorandum of understanding, and if the select board decides they don't want Woodbury Fire to provide fire service anymore, they're gonna write it, ninety days, we're gonna cancel.
And then the two-year contract could turn into a year and ninety days.
But what's interesting is you're just reviewing it every three years if there's chance needed.
Yeah, and it gives you, where you're going for the budget when it comes up for town meeting.
It's still weird, because the budget's outside of that agreement, that's what I'm getting at, what I, the reason this was put in was to try to give some surety on pay. Well, because literally we could come in April first and say, we want all the money, and it's not even Ju- July first, that's why I kept saying, it doesn't make any sense to me, it really makes more sense that it's the payment schedule that we do with the budget part quarterly and the truck fund, and now the capital fund would be paid by July first, so we can do our truck stuff, and, so it gives some control.
Now, the obvious question at this point, and, and for those who watch this, is that we have a member of the board who is a fire chief of the fire department, so do you recuse yourself from a vote on this, or what is the?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what, just, so, I'm happy to do it, but the position is, no, I agree with you, but, um, I am not a business officer of the corporation, so I could go either way, my preference is not to vote on fire department things.
Right, I mean, it can, if it's perceived conflict of interest.
I agree with you, so my, my preference would be to recuse myself in fire department.
I think it's, it has to go up one way or another.
Yeah, no, I knew this was coming, because I, we hadn't even had this, but that would be my preference, is to not vote on these items. But I was just trying to have you understand the structure of the department, I'm, I oversee the firefighting, not the, we, we had a time when I had to be way more involved in the business thing than I'm supposed to be, because like, I can approve an expense, I can't write a check, you know, this, so, so I can't tell the business side, the board and everything what to do, they tell me what to do, that's what happens, and it's just so it's clear, I don't have, I'm just, I'm just, just a number, another member voting, but agree with Mike a hundred percent, I was, my point is, I was gonna recuse myself. That was my plan.
Yeah, usually, like, VLCT advises it, even if there's a.
Perception of.
Perception of.
And there certainly is a perception, so I would just, I don't want to be part of it, so.
Right, yeah.
That's why you show up at the, uh, truck, or the building minutes, so I can wear my fire chief hat, not my select board's hat.
So, so, so as I understand the procedure, if you have, there's a three-man board, if you have two people who are voting on it, and it's a tie vote, the motion fails, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So, um, if you could make that change, you know, for a two-year review and, um, cycling of approval, um.
Sure.
If you literally could do it by going in.
I'll see if they'll just let me steal one of their computers from them.
I was gonna bring that up, we didn't get to talk about it before, it was kinda got out of cycle, we hadn't got to. We kinda divvied up chores for the building committee, because I was like, I wanna represent the fire department, that's why Michael goes, but we warn the meeting, because you got two select board members there, so.
Right, yeah, again, for that perceived.
Yeah, because I just don't wanna, I don't want a perception of impropriety, that's where I was going.
So while Chance is doing that.
We talked about dog licenses.
We could talk, and Laura, do you wanna kind of, I mean, you know more about this than I do, why, why are we doing all this?
Yep, I can just give you a quick, the main points of it, um, every, by May thirtieth, uh, we have to present you guys with a list of delinquent dogs, which is that.
This is right there, yeah.
Um, there is one noted that has sent in her proof that the dog's been vaccinated, but has not brought the money to pay for the license yet.
That's the process one?
Yep, and then the one that has a star next to it, I kinda mentioned to you guys earlier, that's something that needs to be followed up on. Um, I also, in that folder there, I printed out VLCT's definitions and explanations about what the responsibilities are for the town, the state law about it, and there's one section that has a note to you, Michael, it mentions that by July twenty-fifth, if you've sworn out any warrants, that you have to provide that to the state's attorney, or the board can be fined. And with that, one on County Road last year, um, I believe that might apply, so I wanted to ask if you wanted me to contact them and see if we need to send them a copy of the warrant before July twenty-fifth, or if you wanted to do it.
Um, I guess really who you should contact is Kim Silk to get a copy of.
I have it.
You have a copy of the warrant? Okay, um, I mean, I could contact them, or, you know, if you have the copy of the warrant, um, obviously, I would, I would suggest that you just contact them and send them the warrant, and we should be good, I guess.
That's all I wanted to know for sure, and then if you wanna review that, like, there's some repercussions that can be distributed if people are not following the rules, and there are a few, there's stars on the list of people that have been more than one year not registered and been contacted multiple times. So one of the things is fining people, and some other towns are starting to do that more, because it needs to be enforced.
And that, that would be up to our animal control officer.
Right, but if somebody gets bit and the dog is not registered, and they're on our delinquent list and we're not following up on it, that's hellfire.
So my, my thought process, and this is whatever the law says we're supposed to do that, so we should be directing the dog warrant to do in a timely manner, and not letting it run, because she's exactly right, if we don't do this, the list's just gonna grow, and we're gonna have a bigger problem.
And why it will be.
Especially when you know about it. So I would direct our dog control person to take care of whatever, and if we need to sign something or whatever.
So you can review that whenever you want, but it's just information about it, so you'll know what they say about it.
Do you have this on your computer? Might be good to send it to all three of us, just so that we're aware, because I, I wasn't aware of any of this.
Do we need some official motion, or just?
I don't think at this point.
Just follow the law?
Yeah.
Something comes to our desk, we'll deal with it.
There is a ordinance, a Woodbury Town ordinance that was put in place when you were on the board, I think in two thousand and eleven, it was the last two years updated, and that's in there as well, so.
And I know, um, Skip and Kim were working on updating, um, and I don't think, I don't think it ever got totally finished, I think, um, Skip sent a revision to Kim, and then, um, I don't think he, I don't, I don't think he ever heard back, and I'll check in with Skip about that, it was partly from, remember the time when the horse got killed in the village?
Yes, I do, very well.
Yeah, yeah, um, so it was addressing some of the issues that came up then, so.
Horse was trying to kill me.
So, um, so I think, I'll check in with Skip, because my memory is that the, the, a revision of this, um, ordinance, uh, never got, um, fully completed, but.
But this is still good, Kim can still.
Yeah, this, that has nothing to do with the ordinance.
Because I think the law spells out what's to be done, they're having it all, so let's just do that.
They might have that already, and the only reason that they asked for it, I think, is just to make sure that the town is following protocol as far as, because the town's given the authority to issue that warrant, so I think they just wanna oversee it, make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to.
I know, I know Kim knows this stuff, so, um, but, um, I know he's also busy, so it'd be good to have it in our heads, I guess.
I'm counting those.
Oh, I'm here, is it?
Nope, they came and took care of that on time this year.
Yeah, as long as it took us to get it done last year, yeah, it's been nice to see that.
Very much so.
Yeah, things seem to settle down over there.
It does, yeah. At least as far as we've heard, we, you haven't heard of any problems over there?
No, other than a truck stuck across county or the other way, but they got it out of the way.
Okay, so you'll contact.
State's attorney.
State's attorney with that warrant, and, um, I'll contact Skip to see, um, where that revised ordinance, um, my memory is correct, and that it, it kind of got started but didn't get finished. And should we be contacting Kim about any, anything with this that, that you're aware of?
He's got the list, and he knows what his responsibilities are, but I haven't heard anything back from him, except for when he stopped in one day real quick, and he said, yeah, I've been getting your emails, but that's been it, so, maybe following up just to see how he's doing with it all, and is keeping up? That kind of thing.
Thank you for, um, you're kinda doing the groundwork on this, appreciate that.
Love that kind of stuff.
Chance isn't back yet, um, is there anything else about the unlicensed dogs? So you, you, could you send us the information that's in this packet?
I can't.
In our leisure time.
You only see my calendar for junior, have you?
No leisure?
Not much leisure in it.
So until, um, Chance gets back, what, we could, um, start working on the town highway report, um. I put the May twentieth flooding on, on there, obviously, um, you know, it's, and the Cabot Road washout is directly related to that. There were other mini washouts and, and all over town that the local, um, is actually still dealing with, um, which I can share, but.
Last night, they had to do it a little bit too.
Yeah, it rained pretty hard yesterday, yeah.
Yeah, I've been, um, you know, as I mentioned before, I keep a rain gauge, um, for the, for another state program, and, um, we have over nine inches of rain so far in the month of May.
I bet, we had almost four inches that night, it flooded in the village, right?
Yeah, I had three and a half on my rain gauge for that, so, and you know, things were just, it's kinda reminds me of the last time it flooded in the village where there had been a lot of rain, the ground was super saturated, and then we had a real heavy rain and, and all the rooks were just running over.
The stage is set for Irene again, that was the same year Irene.
I don't ever remember, as long as I've been in town, ever remember any runoff running this late, it's a.
Oh, it could have been.
Yeah, no, it's true, yeah.
We've had water packed up, I saw it twice already.
Yeah, yeah.
Only once it'd get in the building for us, but it packed up one of the time, we got down here and it did receive it.
You guys hear a lot of requests for private roads?
Uh, we've had one request, um.
Not usually a lot, though.
No.
East Lawn, once in a while.
And that's actually, good part of that's class four road, well, actually, class three, class four, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, East Lawn.
East Lawn, passed us once in a while.
Yeah, that's, that's class four road, people that work on that, that's.
Woodbury Lake, they're the only three I can think of that we've ever been approached by.
Right.
So some, you have to assume some of the guys are on a back burner while you get everything else caught up, I'm guessing.
Well, you know, like, um, the north road, which is the East Calis Road, um, it's class three for a short stretch, and then it's class four, um, actually, it's class four right to the Cabot Line, um, at this point in time, um, but there are a number of camp owners that, they usually come in once a year, every, or every other year, and request gravel, and we give them the gravel, um, and they do the actual work on the class four road, fixing it up, so they pretty much maintain that road, um, that's not a private road, and the roads that go down to the camps are private, but, um, the main artery in, um.
Down to the dam, we fill the little gravel on that road.
Yeah, yeah, um, on the Nichols.
Nichols, yeah.
Yeah.
Nichols End.
Yeah.
And it's in our interest too, to maintain these roads, especially for the watershed stuff, keep the water going where it's supposed to.
So I did wanna talk about the, the Cabot Road, um, washout, I know that, um, Brian, you, you were, they, the state folks from V-Trans came and looked at it.
Yeah.
Did they have any?
They didn't get back to me after they left.
Okay, so I haven't heard back.
There's just one guy up there.
We're just waiting to hear back from them.
Wait, wait, wait. I did talk to Shana, um, a bit about that, and, um, my, um, from that conversation, I think what they're gonna do is kind of, they've looked at the situation, they're gonna kind of come up with a remedial plan, um.
You're gonna do an estimate as well?
Right.
Because there's a number where.
Right.
We could get, yeah.
We can, we can get funding from V-Trans to.
If it's over twenty-five?
Twenty thousand.
Over twenty.
It's over twenty thousand dollars.
Then it's eighty-twenty.
It's eighty-twenty, yeah.
It's under twenty, it's all on us.
Yeah.
But they haven't come up with an estimate yet?
I haven't, I haven't heard yet. I haven't heard yet, so, maybe we'll give them another week or so, and then just make an inquiry of
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Take my money.
Take it.
No. You're still talking about money, though, so. Yeah, so
So there, we're still waiting to hear from that, then.
Waiting to hear from them about that, yeah.
One of the other things, along with that washout, is the brook from Cabot Road, down through Route 14. The brook is full.
Full of rocks again.
Full of rocks, and it's so high that the water is coming over the banks regularly, and running right around, crisis on both sides.
So this is from the box culvert on the Cabot Road?
Yeah, you could hear the stones coming down and landing in there, and it's a lot more full than it used to be.
So it's so high now that the water table, the water level is really high there, so.
So for us to dig that, we're going to have to talk to the stream engineer. So I'm just wondering if we're going to, if this other thing happens fast enough, we're already going to have a stream engineer involved, or we could ask the stream engineer if we're allowed to go remove those rocks, my guess is they're not going to let us.
They're not going to like that, I know.
Because we went through this after, remember, they opened it up for about two weeks, we quickly cleaned the brook behind the fire station. If we hadn't done it, we'd have had to go through the permit process.
Yeah, so yeah, we've got to figure that out, because it is
He's getting water.
He's getting water constantly now in the basement.
Who's that?
Chris.
Chris?
Yeah, because it's just, it's so high back there. And every little rain that comes around it now, and over the banks. Yeah, it's terrible, that deposit, a lot of fill right from that box culvert down to the store, probably all the way through.
Yeah, well, that, that bank.
What it was, it was backing up at the store, and the rocks would just stop on that flat spot, because you get a lot of velocity created.
Have we been able to, should I put my wet suit on and go through that culvert underneath the store?
If you want to.
I probably should.
Make sure you have somebody watching when you do it.
Well, I'm just wondering, you know, what's in there?
Probably a lot. That's why I wish they'd move forward with this thing, because
Yeah, because that needs to be part of it, is
Because if they're going to do it right off this summer, if we got it done this summer, you could use the engineer who's there under the same process to clean up a little further.
So I'll check in with A and R, and whoever the stream engineer is about that.
Yeah, because that's created a problem now.
Yeah, that's going to be, yeah.
And are we keeping track of the other areas of washout?
Yeah.
Because I know Chance was looking for numbers.
Yeah.
So we could maybe get some reimbursement, because I know they've been buying a ton of gravel.
Yeah, yeah. Greg keeps a little journal, so, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, is he taking pictures?
Yeah, we've got, that's, yeah, Greg Adams has been taking pictures on his cell phone, he's got a lot of pictures. But again, this is the thing, getting those guys an iPad would be really handy for any of this stuff.
Now, they did have a camera over there.
Don't know where it is, it disappeared.
We did that way back, you know, when we were doing this the last time, so.
And I've used my camera for, you know, some of the, some of the projects, but yeah, it would be great for them to have something that they could, you know, when they come on the moment of finding something that's washed out, or just take the photos, and then it's, you know, then it's done, and
When you guys are looking, you might want to look for a camera that's GIS compatible.
Has a GPS in it, yeah.
It's tagging all your photos, the feds want it that way. They want the GPS.
Yeah, we almost talked about it one time, every truck had a camera of that, just so if somebody comes across something, they could take a picture of it then, rather than having to
That geolocates the camera, the GIS geolocates the photograph.
Well, I know Greg has talked with the road foreman from East Lawn, who are can't remember his name, but, so he has, he has in mind an iPad, and getting the apps on it, you know, like GPS, it would really be, it would be a good working tool.
So is there something you can get us a quote on it, and
Yeah, it's like, it's about $1,000, I think, so. But yeah, and he would like to get one, so we've been talking about it for
So I just want to see is the quote, and what benefit it would provide, what programs, whatever.
Yeah.
What's on it, if it makes their job easier, and
Yeah, East Lawn player was able to go through a program with Verizon where but, of course Verizon, we don't really have Verizon in this
You do on the Hilltops. Just tell them to hold it up and stand on top of the truck.
And they basically provided the iPad with all, all of the apps that they would be needing, and then they pay you know, like a yearly monthly fee or whatever for
Because AOT came up, and they turned in a report saying $75,000 worth of damage. However, I believe they're only referring to Route 14, I don't think they're talking about all the other stuff. Okay, I told Jonathan we'd work on getting something together, he said it doesn't have to be a specific format when I talk to him, so. It's just really a list of where, what, and how much.
Okay, I think I could probably, I'm going to meet with Greg Friday morning, I'll work up a rough list for him, I mean, I can kind of, I have a list here, basically, up on East Hill, there were two driveways that were washed out, and people were kind of homebound. One person rented a car, and the Valley Lakes, Scrivner Road, Charder Hill, Cranberry Meadow Road, Foster Hill, Town Farm Road, all those roads are pretty severely gullied. And there were a number of culverts that plugged.
And one you lost, right, at the Cabot Road?
Well, that was actually
Older one, that's older, yeah.
That was April 20th, but that same culvert down by Greenwood Lake, where the falls are, that overran again. And then there were other culverts that, pretty much debris from the brooks caught in the face of the culvert, and then created, you know, a couple sticks. Yeah, and then the brush leaves packed up against them, and so there's still unplugging culverts.
So have they actually seen all the roads? Because I know my road's not on that list, and my road needs to be looked at, so who cares? How many roads have they not gotten to?
There are still a few, there are still a few, I mean, like, your road is traveled on
Yeah, mine's a short road, but what I'm saying is if they're not hitting all the roads, how many other roads are not on that list yet?
Pretty much all the roads that were damaged with the flooding on May 20th have been addressed at this point.
Except yours.
Okay.
So you probably want to put his on the list.
I'm less worried about that, as I am making sure we get all the damage caused on this, so we send it to Jonathan.
What basically happens is that, is that the more heavily traveled roads get the first attention, and then, you know, down the list. So, and you know, they've been hauling, hauling gravel to, you know, and as soon as they get it in, it gets brought out, so that there's a lot of gravel that has gone to repair the roads, so.
So those numbers count, too, towards FEMA stuff, or?
The numbers of, well, where do we?
Should, if everything was washed out, yeah.
And all the hours that you guys have been into it, hours that you've been putting into it, and select board members, all of these things go into that cost.
So I can, I'll try to have a rough list for you by early, early next week or tomorrow, I know Greg, Greg keeps a little journal down there, so. He's got loads of gravel, and where they've worked, and what they've done. That's pretty, yeah, that's pretty much it on my, my list of But, and then, you know, some culverts, it would wash out into the side of the road from the water.
Right, from hitting it, yeah. They had all the washes.
Most of those have been repaired, too. So, is there anything, while we're still on, anything else about the flooding at all, that
Well, it morphed into the village parking lot.
Right.
The flood, I did not get quotes for patching, because before I could get them, the flood finished ruining the parking lot, which we've kind of looked at. All the, it's ruined, that, all that pavement, you can just pick it up now, so we're at, at replacing now. So I don't know if any of that is recoverable, or is it not a town?
As far as with FEMA?
We definitely, I, just before I went and got a quote to have it redone, I was wanting to say, yes, please do that, and I was, the second question was, is it, since it was destroyed by
The flooding, I mean, it seems like that would be
Shawna be the one to ask that of, or is it somebody else?
I could ask her that.
Because what we saw was the water was running underneath the pavement, and lifted it all up, and so the kids were picking it up and throwing it. Yesterday, we were doing truck checks, so I was like, yeah, there's no, there's no patch to it, something to get into, so it's a waste of time to do that. I was hoping we could patch it for a year, but it's just, there's no patch to that.
Take it up.
So what I was going to do is get a quote to have a company remove all the pavement, deal with the grade, and repay, and then we can give that number to FEMA, and we can look at it ourselves, and if that's okay, I just didn't want to do that. It's still stomach for it, okay.
Seems like that's what we need to do, yeah. I don't know if this would, was there a timeline on when we need to get this information, John?
I assume there was a timeline, because he called me every day for three days, asking me for the numbers, and I'd call him back and tell him I didn't have anything yet. But then when I talked to him yesterday, he said, "No, you know, if they get it to you in the next couple of weeks, it's fine." It's not like it's due yesterday, and I said, "Oh, okay." So yeah, I assumed with the urgency that he was calling initially, there was a
Just trying to get it going.
I think he's used to not getting responses from people.
Right, because we're busy shoveling dirt. Sorry, it's our busy shoveling dirt.
So I think his urgency is misplaced with us, because we're actually responding.
So they kind of all fit together, that's why I kind of brought it up, it's like, I don't, that's flood damage now, and I
It is, yeah.
There's a repair to it.
So, I think that's pretty much it for the, yeah, that's pretty much it for the town highway report. And I assume that Greg will be here, I think we'll try to set it up so that he's here for our first
First meeting.
First meeting of each month. Okay, so we've got a recently amended
Yeah, and nobody actually caught my typo in there, I was from seven to nine.
Oh.
Which, which was nice, because it gave me eight that I could write this line about the real
So I'm fine with approving this memorandum of understanding.
Yeah, I read it already, so.
So eight, eight just says that we'll review within two years of the signature date, so. I came with a coat.
I was taking it off out there.
No, I must be out there.
Yeah.
I was taking it off out there.
So you're the chief, and you're the president, is that true?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm fire chief. Because I'm refusing myself officially from the board, yeah, for this purpose.
I mean, I suppose you could write in the third select board spot that
Just write something, or sentience by
I would do it as the chair.
Yeah, I'm just going to put the name here.
Obviously, be in favor of it, because I'm the one that proposed it in the first place. Many, seven, eight years ago, about here.
I'll get a copy of those, and Do you want me to bring the copy back to you, or leave it with Diana, or?
I guess leave it with Diana, what do you think, Brian?
Do you want a copy in the select board file?
Yeah, it might be good to have, have a copy of it.
That's not like I have to walk that far, so.
No, it's only a little bit there.
Is that all you guys needed, as far as the flooding and everything else, too?
Yeah, I think, and I'll meet with Greg, and I'll try to get that information to you, as soon as I can.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And maybe by the end of, let's say by the, towards the end of next week, that we haven't, haven't heard anything from V-Trans about the Cabot Road.
We could call again.
Yeah, call and ask about it.
They'll probably get a lot of calls.
I'm sure they're pretty busy, too, yeah, because, although, you know, it does seem to be pretty localized.
Yeah, we had it bad.
Yeah, I know St. J. got about three inches of rain, but other places, I don't think
Oh, really?
We got it as hard as we did. So, at this point, I'd like to make a motion with the select board, go into executive session, citing 1 DSA 313A3, to discuss a personnel issue.
Second.
All in favor? So at 7:45?